Oh, good. Okay, here we go. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM and it is February 8th. And I am going to call the City Sidra Wully Council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I begin roll call, I want to welcome Dr. Adapol and his group here from Job Corps. Thank you for coming in, and I look forward to meeting with you after the meeting. I hope you have some good questions for me. Try to stump the mayor. I also want to welcome Commissioner Janiky and also Sarah Hinman and George Kosovich. They are from the county and they're going to be giving a presentation tonight in just a few minutes. So moving on, we'll begin with roll call and I will start just down the line. So Councilman Owen.
Present.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Yes, thank you. How's Canada?
It's good. Yeah, we made it safely. Thank you.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
All right, moving on to approval of the agenda, I am looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Lavaca. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda, items one through three. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilman Owens. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right. All right. So tonight we have a wonderful presentation. Just to give you a heads up, we actually did talk quite a bit. We talked for about 45 minutes last week, last Wednesday regarding North Star. So we're looking forward to having a continued conversation and learning more information. So I believe, are we going to start with you, Commissioner Janiky? So we will start with Commissioner Janiky and then Sarah and George will come up, so. Yes, and the blue light needs to be on, so there should be if, is that on?
I don't know. Testing? No.
See, there should be. I don't know where. Just a moment, Jen will come over and help you. Honestly, I've never used the wireless mic, so I'm in certain. Okay. It's on.
It's really, it's really low. It appears to be on, but really low.
Okay. Here we go. Yeah, and make sure the blue light is on on that one. Just push the button. How's that? Testing? Perfect.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Johnson and council and Zoom guests. I'm Lisa Janiky, Skagit County Commissioner, and I appreciate the time you've given us on agenda tonight to talk about the North Star project. Before we jump in, I want to introduce one other person who is really important in this process, who is our new Public Health Director, Keith Higman, is here. Many of you were familiar with Julia, or Julia, sorry, going to give you another job. Jennifer Johnson, who ran our Public Health Department all through, throughout the COVID experience, and then applied for a job in the Commissioner's office, and that's how she got the title of Deputy County Administrator. But I just want to welcome Keith. He was Public Health Director down in Island County, so we kind of stole him from our smaller neighbor. Welcome, Keith. Tonight, the presentation on North Star, I know will be a continuation of the conversation that you started or have had. And I listened to part of the questions and comments that were coming up in your conversation at the last council meeting. I'd like to give just a little bit of context to it because I know I was kind of credited with having a big heart and coming here and, you know, getting all the mayors together. But it didn't start quite so auspiciously. We, it start, the whole bringing the mayors and police chiefs together did start in 2019. We've been having conversations that long about how things were funded. And it started with a really big misstep by the Skagit County Commissioners. We were trying to also address homelessness and getting a facility and getting a day center where people could come, get services, take showers, you know, put their stuff so they could go to work or not. But it was a day center. It wasn't even housing. And we were photographed by the Skagit Valley Herald, looking at a building in Mount Vernon, and the mayor didn't know about it, and the council didn't know about it. And all of a sudden, it was, oh, my gosh, why are you gonna, why is the county trying to push that on us and put it in a place where they had a much different vision for that space? And so it is with really a sense of humility that I stand before you because it taught us that we have to work together. In 2019, the Public Health Department, Jennifer Johnson and some of the other public health folk convened the mayors, myself, our sheriff, your police chief, and the police chiefs from the other cities and said, and we went through this iterative process of what is it that we can do? What would make the most sense? Where are we going to have our best outcomes and be able to demonstrate to our taxpayers that we're using dollars wisely? Part of what came up in that process, there were a couple of aha moments, is that everyone around the table, except for maybe Public Health, thought that Skagit County had very deep pockets and lots of pockets, kind of like the ultimate cargo pants of cash, to fund all these programs. And while there's, there are very specific buckets, there's recording fees, and there's one-tenth money for behavioral health, and there's, there's other sources of grant money that come through CDBG that come through. It is not an unlimited source of funds. But the city had, the cities had never had representation on the committees that were making those decisions. So one of the immediate things that we did was open that up so that there's a rotating position for our mayors to at least be able to see the other projects that are there. You know, so, so I say that with a lot of learning. The other aha takeaway moment, and it took a few meetings to get there, was a long conversation about if we're going to address homelessness and we need shelters and day centers, we need overnight, we need transitional housing, we need recovery services and support, and to say nothing of treatment, we need these things. And at first, it was like every jurisdiction wanted to have their own campus, not a campus. Should it be all together? Should it be apart? We talked about Oxford Houses. We talked about, you know, what does this look like? And it became, just from the financial impact of running four cities' programs completely separate, the county maybe, you know, participating or maybe not, it became really clear that our greatest impact and our best use of taxpayer dollars was going to be to collectively decide on what part of the system needed to be in place and to do that collaboratively. And from that mindset, well, to back up just a minute, I remember Chief Tucker was the one who was attending all those meetings. And he's the one who said, you know, at first he said, we don't need to be part of a big group because I know, you know, the guy under the bridge over by Highway 9, I know the one, you know, one who sleeps on the bench always on Metcalf. He knew his people. But as we started talking about that, you know, law enforcement often picks up somebody and they need a place to drop, you know, drop off people, and Chief Tucker came along in that whole thinking of, oh, yeah, this would be better if this were centralized, and it would be so great to know that law enforcement had a place to take whoever it was that they picked up off the streets during the night. And that became the idea that Mayor Sexton brought forward and became the First Step Shelter. And I know that you, that you're well aware of that project and that you contributed to the actual capital construction of those little pallet, of those little pallet shelters. You know, operating a facility like that affects all of us because as the county pours money into the support of that particular project, it means there isn't necessarily money, you know, someplace else. So we, so when we are talking about North Star and that guiding principle and that, you know, the certainty that there is something that will, will lead what it is that our community as a whole responds to beyond any one of your terms. Well, beyond my term and Julia's term for sure, Councilman Allen has been at this for a while, too. Some of you are much younger. You may be around decades longer than us. But in the long term, you know, my goal always in being an elected official is what can, what systems can I help put in place that will outlive my term in office? And I think that's what we are trying to do is with the one-time money that ARPA affords us is to be able to go through this large, community-wide conversation and figure out what is it that needs to be built or services provided? How do we coordinate that? How can we learn from each other, support each other? And not ignore geographic boundaries, but be, but be able to look beyond the specific geographic boundary and, and know that we are serving all of our, our community members. And I think about it in a term of when, so when Mayor Sexton suggested that the city owned a one-acre piece of property and that he would have his city crews put it together and pour the pads and pull the electrical, I can tell you the mayor who was the most excited that that was happening and said she'd put money in is because then it wouldn't be in Mount Vernon. And so sometimes having the right facility, it just needs to be in Skagit County and maybe not within whichever city limit we are talking about. So I guess I, I set that up as the, this is how we're moving forward and the idea of when Jennifer Johnson, Public Health, brought the idea of bringing Tenfold, the consultant, into the valley, bringing that expertise there and having input as to what vision, what, what does our community look like and how can we best address it? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to George and Sarah to actually do the presentation. I just wanted you to have that little bit of background. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think it's on. Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Sarah Hinman. I'm Assistant Director with Skagit County Public Health. My colleague, George Kosovich, is a public health analyst and he manages the Community Services Division. And so I'm just going to give a little bit more background and detail about the North Star project. And then George is going to share more information about our homeless housing funding process and give some ideas for possible collaboration if the council is interested in that. And then we have time at the end to answer all the questions that you might have for us. I think, next slide. I don't know who's running the slides. Oh, there. Is it you? Okay. So I think as Mayor Johnson has already shared with you, in early 2022, Skagit County launched the North Star Project in partnership with the mayors of Anna Cordis, Burlington, Mount Vernon, and Sidra Wully. We recognized that our existing programs and methods for keeping people safe and stably housed weren't working very well. And we felt compelled to act to address the complex behavioral health and homelessness challenges in Skagit County together. Our services are going to a growing population of people who are suffering with little to no movement in the improvement of the overall well-being of those people in our community. The mayors and commissioners have taken a stance because the chronic homelessness and health issues we're seeing are unacceptable. And waiting around for the state or federal government to provide a solution is not going to work, so we need to take action locally. Phase one of the North Star Project took place in 2022. The leadership team, which consists of the mayors and Commissioner Janiky, established an advisory group charter and a team of consultants called Tenfold Health worked with us to map our current resources, system gaps, and opportunities. They also developed the guiding principles and an overarching framework built around the vital conditions, which I'll talk about more in a minute. All this information and more is available. We have a North Star website, so our guiding principles are there. All our documents, planning documents are there if you're interested in learning more. Phase two started in January of this year, which is the beginning of our implementation phase. Next slide. So the Vital Conditions Framework guides the North Star Project efforts. You can see from the graphic that there are seven vital conditions for health and well-being for all people in the community. They include a thriving natural world, basic needs for health and safety, humane housing, meaningful work and wealth, lifelong learning, reliable transportation, and central to all of these is belonging and civic muscle. Investments in each of these conditions are necessary to create a thriving community for everyone. For North Star, there will be emphasis placed on both vital conditions for the entire community as well as urgent services. In times of crisis, urgent services are life-saving and necessary. And we know that the best way to escape this downward spiral we're in is through balanced investments in both vital conditions and urgent services. Next slide. So one of the guiding principles of the North Star Project is to place some focus on priority populations. That doesn't mean all of our efforts are focused there, but we do have certain priorities and focus. During Phase One, the leadership team and the advisory group did a lot of work to identify our first priority population. And then so in 2023, North Star Project efforts, funding, and resources will be focused on meeting the needs of chronically homeless individuals who suffer from a disabling condition, including substance use disorder, serious mental illness, and complex medical problems or severe trauma. The reasons that this population was chosen were that these are the most vulnerable people who are most likely to die on the street. People living on the street have a life expectancy of 50 years, and we can help extend their lives by helping them into housing. It also costs communities a lot of money to keep people living on the street. It's estimated that it costs a community $40,000 per year, per person living on the streets. That includes things like emergency room visits, jail stays, detox facilities. And for some people with the highest acuity living on our streets, that cost is considerably more than that. And if we could get good at housing the hardest to serve, then it will be even easier in the future to house people with less acuity. Successful programming with people with the most needs helps us realize that the goal of ending homelessness can be achieved for everyone. We know that permanent supportive housing, which pairs a rental subsidy with case management and supportive services, is a proven solution to chronic homelessness. Next slide. So as, as we move into Phase Two, goals include some specific strategies. The first is to implement a care coordination software platform to improve efficiencies among providers by allowing them to share information, which they can't currently do. The target launch date for that software is July 1st. We'll start this year with three or four partners to work out the processes and then move into expansion with additional community-based organizations and healthcare organizations in 2024. Another goal is the development of a shared housing agenda to increase the supply quality and diversity of housing. The housing agenda will create a shared housing development pipeline countywide. It will identify gaps and develop options for strengthening and leveraging existing efforts to build more housing. And we plan to host a housing summit, which will build on the 2019 Housing Summit, which was held at McIntyre Hall in Mount Vernon. We're also creating an action plan to address gaps within the behavioral health system. We're pursuing Phase Two of the stabilization campus on Highway 20 here in Sidra Wully, which would add 48 beds of acute detox, mental health crisis stabilization, and co-occurring residential treatment. Martha's Place, which is a 70 units of permanent supportive housing, will begin taking tenants in mid-April. And we have a recovery cafe in Mount Vernon, which will be opening sometime in the next month. Next slide. Some of the processes currently just getting underway now to accomplish our Phase Two goals, we have developed and started a care management task force focused on the priority population. We're working jointly with the mayors and commissioners on a funding framework that aligns with the North Star Project priorities and target populations. And we're developing and launching a countywide well-being survey to establish a baseline for investing in the future populations and areas of greatest need. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to George to talk about our funding process.
Thank you. And Commissioner Janiky and Sarah did a nice job of kind of setting everything up. And, and I watched the council meeting last week, and I'm going to try and address some of the questions that came up, really most specifically about within the county's homeless housing funding, where the funding comes from, what kind of uses it has, and then really kind of talk about how it gets allocated and some ideas about collaboration around allocation. I think the, before getting into that, just really want to get to the why. Why does it make sense to collaborate around funding? We're in a, in a new space where now our cities have access to their own source of funding, and Sidra Wully has its, its own source of housing funding. The county has its, its funding. And I think the, the opportunity with working together is, is really about efficiency and avoiding duplication. So, you know, just to give you an example, we might all separately set our own priorities and decide that, say, youth homelessness is the biggest issue, and we all decide to fund youth homelessness initiatives, which is great, but not plan on funding anything around domestic violence or other kind of categories. And so I think what, what we're trying to do in this collaborative model is just make, you know, at, at the first point, make sure we know what we're doing, and then make sure it's meeting communities' needs in a coherent way. And so that's what, what I think we're trying to do. To get to the point about funding, we're now kind of on, on the homeless housing funding NOFA, or Notice of Funding Availability. So there are unfortunately a lot of acronyms in use. I'll try and define them as we go. But every year, the county funds homeless services using a number of different sources of funding. You can see them up on the screen. So document recording fees, those are the fees that, that you pay when you record a document, when you refinance your house, when you get a mortgage. And some of that goes to the state, some of it comes back to the county and can be used for, for certain housing services. There are, there's a state funding source called the State Housing in Essential Need, or HEN Grant. It's a particular funding source that can be paid, can pay for rental assistance or other services for people who meet that eligibility, pretty prescriptive about how it can be used. There's a state consolidated homeless grant that pulls a number of different sources together with its own restrictions. And then there's county behavioral health sales tax. So this is the simple version. Unfortunately, there are a couple of different kinds of doc recording fees, different types of CHG, but different sources with different uses that we put together every year and then turn around and, and fund housing programs. So we go to the next slide. This is just to give you an idea of the categories of things that we fund and the agencies. So in the last cycle, there were 14 different programs funded among different categories. And you can see the categories up there. So diversion, that's really kind of a prevention strategy. It's much cheaper and, and better to keep somebody from entering homelessness with a little bit of assistance rather than letting them get to homelessness. So diversion is a use. Shelter, you know, I think what most of us would think as a traditional shelter opportunity is a use. Permanent supportive housing, rental assistance and case management. Traditionally, we funded coordinated entry, which is that kind of prioritized list and front door to homeless services. What we're doing, and I'll share a little bit more about that, is we're still going to be something we fund, but at, based on feedback from our, our North Star group, we really want to take another look at that. And so we pulled that out of this NOFA and want to bid it out separately because there are some, some opportunities with how that works. The agencies and programs, you can see that some agencies receive multiple types of funding. I think these would look familiar to you. Community Action, Family Promise, Northwest Youth Services, Anna Cordis Family Center, DV SASS, the Housing Authority, the YMCA Teen Shelter, Compass Health, and Samish Indian Nation are, are the currently funded programs. We accept applications from any nonprofit agency that, that would like to put in a funding application. Go to the next slide. A little bit busy, but just in terms of process, as Commissioner Janiky said, we made some changes to how this works. So we've always had an allocation committee. The, the funding goes to the United Way, which is kind of the, the impartial nonprofit for review and, and recommendation. And then funding goes to the commissioners. What's different here is the, the upper-left box is we now have this North Star Leadership Group that, that weighed in around priorities. And Sarah shared some of these already. Really, a recommendation from that group, and, and we're putting that into action, is to serve the highest need individuals. So people that are chronically homeless and suffer from a disabling condition, like a substance use disorder or a serious mental illness. The funding's still open to those other populations, so including victims of domestic violence, youth, families with children, and people with disabilities. And then we've reworked the scoring based on, on feedback from the, the group as well. And just in terms of timing on, on how this works, the applications are actually open now. They'll be due in mid-February. There's this review cycle, really getting to decisions in April and contracts starting on July 1st. So just to give you an idea of timing and thinking about how that works, that marching towards funding flowing July 1st, decisions from our committee and board in April. For the next slide, as Commissioner Janiky said, I think sometimes people think there's maybe more money in the system than there is. But I wanted to give, I gave you kind of the words. I want to give you some numbers beside them and, and call out a few things. So this current cycle, we funded $2.5 million worth of programs. And you can see the different funding amounts. So 1.4 million of doc recording fees, $93,000 of behavioral health sales tax, about $1 million of the state funding source. The, the first thing I would call out is we've seen a really steep decline in document recording fees. So with the slowdown in the housing market, it's a volume business with no refinances happening. We're expecting, our document recording fees are down literally 50%, so kind of chopped in half. Our commissioners, in order to keep the contracts whole, provided, they, they filled that gap for the current period with $600,000 of county ARPA funding, so we could kind of make good on the, the commitments in that funding category. But we're going to see an impact, you know, pretty significant decline in the, the available funding. So going from $2.5 to $1.5 million. The, kind of going back to the caveat I said is we have pulled out coordinated entry, which is about $280,000 as well. But we also expect a lot more applications in, and we have the First Step Shelter, which is not, not in that current budget. So kind of more needs, less revenue. And so really the, you know, given that limited funding of And so really, you know, given that limited funding environment, I think it's another point that, you know, we can't, if we operate separately, we're going to be challenged. I think it's also going to be an environment where, you know, agencies are in a cuts environment, and so I think every dollar needs to be spent as efficiently as possible. The other thing I would note, kind of before moving on to a discussion about how we might work together on funding, is the other big change is 1590. So the housing sales tax was passed by different jurisdictions, and we've looked at what's available in those different categories, and it looks like there's about $1.9 million that hasn't been earmarked by jurisdictions. And I'll talk a little bit more about what each jurisdiction is planning, but there is money out there that can be used for housing services. Within 1590, up to 40% of it can be used for services. The remaining 60% has to be used for new development or operations, maintenance, and services of new units. So lots of restrictions to keep in mind, but there is some opportunity with new dollars. And why don't we go to the next slide? And this really is the request, where we come into the request to collaborate. And just kind of starting again, you know, our ask with the city would be to consider using its, some of its money to partner with us and collaborate with us on this homeless service funding. Rough numbers, that would be about $100,000 a year. The total 1590 for Cedar Woolley, I think is anywhere between $250,000 and $270,000, depending on how receipts come in. So it's about $100,000. The other discussions we've been having, you know, just to be very clear, Skagit County has allocated those funds for operations of Martha's Place, the permanent supportive housing. So that's kind of where those funds have been earmarked. The math is kind of easy to keep track of because it's roughly equivalent. Skagit County will collect about $1 million. Mount Vernon, same, about $1 million, and Burlington, about $1 million in that 1590 bucket. There are slight differences, but that helps me keep the math straight. For Mount Vernon, they've used their services portion already to work on their co-response program, so our ask to them was, we've requested them to consider funding Martha's Place, the operations, which would free up county funds. So we've been using kind of this term about horse trading. You know, if the county has its funding allocated in one spot, if a city can come in and backfill that funding, then that can be repurposed. And that's necessary because unfortunately, all these funding sources have strings attached. So like I said, 1590, there's a cap on how much you can use for services, so we're working in those confines with Mount Vernon. But that's our ask of Mount Vernon, is consider directing some funding to Martha's Place, which would free up county funding. For Burlington, they haven't yet made any decisions. They have the flexibility, so they have that full $1 million available to spend. The discussions there have been around First Steps and potentially funding that. They also seem to have some interest in potentially partnering on the NOFA or making a contribution to Martha's Place. And then Anacortes is a little special because they allocated their funding several years ahead. They did it via levy, via vote of the people. They kind of called out projects they were going to fund. So in their case, their money is essentially earmarked already, and they don't have that Other kind of, you know, beyond just the homeless housing funding, there are some opportunities as well. There will be opportunities. The opioid settlement dollars are an availability, kind of a similar idea where jurisdictions retain control over how they want to spend the money. There's a larger kind of regional group that will be meeting, and I think the good news there is, it looks like there will be more funding that will be coming available as soon as this spring through another settlement and potentially further settlements beyond that. I think the other opportunity is around development. So, you know, today I mostly have talked about services. There's also an opportunity around development of new units of affordable housing, and that's one where I think it's important, and we can learn from other communities where they have a clear pipeline. It's a really competitive environment to leverage state funding, tax credit funding. And so in order to be competitive, your project has to have everything in place. Some of that's funding, siting, operating expenses. And so I think by working together and modeling other communities, we can line up that best project. And it might be one year, the project comes from one city, the next year, the project comes from another city, but by pooling funds and working together, we can find the best projects. And then lastly, just the mechanics of this, this idea of co-funding, there are lots of different options, and it's really up to the city how to make it work. I think, you know, just two simple ways to think about this would be pooling funds. So if the city was amenable, said we wanted to dedicate $100,000 to a NOFA, contract with the county, and we allocate that money and contract with the providers and give you a report on how that money's been used and the results. So kind of take over everything. I think on the other end of the spectrum, there's more of a collaborative model where we work together on that funding. We already have representation on our committee, but we keep track of, hey, what are you funding? What do you have desire to fund? And make those decisions in a kind of comprehensive way, but you all kind of maintain complete control. You contract with the entities and manage reporting, so we kind of know what we're doing. We're working together, but you have your contracts, you have your funding, and we do our thing over there. So there are multiple models. We just wanted to start the conversation about how that might work, and, you know, some of it depends on the city's interest. You know, how directive do you want to be? Do you want to pick some of those categories of funding that I referenced? Or are you open to all of them in terms of what do you have to interest? I think the benefit, the other benefit is, you know, we're already going through a process where we're taking applications, reviewing applications. It's running, and so we want to make that information to you available regardless of whether you participate about, here's what we funded, and here's what didn't get funded, and it might be some opportunities. So I'll stop there, and we can take any questions from y'all.
Councilman Lavaca?
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you so much, George and Sarah. I really appreciate it. All you guys are doing, very cool. I was just wondering, do you have a rough estimate about how many people that are homeless in Skagit County, and then how many beds you are looking for?
Yeah, it's always a hard question, and it always feels like a dodge when we answer the how many people are homeless, because there are multiple definitions of what does homeless mean, and it's challenging to count. So I'll give you some boundaries. Every year, and in fact, we just wrapped up for this year, we don't have the results yet, there's a physical count of homelessness where people go around and survey people, and, you know, almost like a census. And it's done, it was done for January 26th of this year, and typically, there are between 300 and 500 people counted through that PIT count. And the other, kind of the other boundary of homelessness, school districts track the number of homeless kids that they have in their school district. Different definition, so you don't have to be living on the street. You can be, you know, staying in a friend's place. It's very temporary, but counted as homelessness. And in Skagit County, there are many more people are tracked as homeless through that measure. Just the kids is over 700, so not even counting the adults. So, you know, we can give you, DSHS tracks a boundary, but the other, the other measure that we look at is the number of people that seek service, seek and qualify services at Community Action and meet that definition. And that last year was, I think, 1,800 people. So the numbers are a little bit over the, all over the place, but there's certainly probably thousands of people that meet the definition of homeless, one definition or another in Skagit County.
Thank you. So over 1% probably of our populace, for sure. For the chronic homeless, are we seeing a decline? Are we seeing an increase? Or for the overall homeless, has that been in a trend upwards over the past five years or so?
You know, I think it's hard to measure the PIT count, the point-in-time count is the best measure. I think the best kind of way to capture is visible homelessness, I think. And I think, I think, you know, through law enforcement and other partners, I think we would probably all agree that signs of visible homelessness are up in Skagit County.
Do you know kind of why it's not working in other areas and where we would improve in those areas?
So when they look at, you know, homelessness is a pretty complex problem. I think the, when they look at drivers, you know, the, a couple of the biggest contributing factors for homelessness are rising rents and low vacancy rates. So when there are not a lot of options to find a unit, it leaves people who have checkered histories or, you know, kind of financial challenges really struggling. And so I think when you look at areas across the region that have high rates of homelessness, you typically find rising rents and low vacancy rates as those kind of driving factors.
And then I would assume that narcotic usage would be a factor. We just saw over 100,000 ODs on fentanyl alone this year, which is alarming for any community to see that. Are we seeing a reduction in people that we're helping from, are they receiving support for drug addictions, the ones that are having that issue? And then is that in decline by chance?
There's a lot of questions together, so let me see if I can kind of capture them. I think one of the challenges we have in Skagit County is not a lot of supportive housing. So, you know, I think First Step tries to wrap services around people, including health and substance use treatment, but it's pretty time-limited. So I think what we're excited about with Martha's Place is 70 units of housing with services that people will be able to take advantage of to maintain that housing.
I want to check with Councilman McGoffin. I cannot see you online because of the way the screen is set up, but I didn't know if you had a question. I wanted to give you that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question. Whenever it's my turn, I'm ready to just let me know.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I really first applaud you guys' efforts on North Star. I think it's going to be a really beneficial project for all the cities and the county. And one of the concerns that I've had discussing this with my constituents is, you know, they're worried that as we build out more services, more housing, more of these projects to help people, their concern is that it will attract more people to the city, more people to the county if they know these services are here, potentially more crime. Can you just speak to that a little bit? And, you know, how can I relate to them that, you know, these services are meant to help the people that are homeless from our own community? How can I help address that concern for them?
Yeah, I think it's a pretty common question. I think, I think it's important to note that there are people here who are seeking services and aren't being helped already. And I think the one, I think the, we often focus on kind of visible signs of homelessness, which is certainly a problem, but I think people are often taken aback when they hear about homeless children and, you know, families living in cars. I think the thing that's kind of, that resonates with me is we just have, we have a lot of Skagit County residents that aren't being served today with housing, and so, you know, it's not like there's a surplus that would be, a surplus of services where, you know, if you drive to Skagit County today, you're going to get something that you wouldn't get someplace else. I think that's a little bit of a misnomer.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Veterans, can you address veterans? I know that that's one thing that is covered under this funding. We do have the Veterans Center in Burlington. What kind of housing is being afforded them?
Yeah. Veterans has been a real, veteran service has been a real bright spot for, in the homeless housing community. So regionally, veterans homelessness is down more than 50% over the last 10 years because there's been, there's been an attention on that. And so we've got some great resources in our community through Vets Connect and HUD has a housing voucher program called VASH that's available. There are a number of new units that are available for VASH voucher holders. It's still a challenge in the tight rental market for finding landlords that accept those vouchers, but that's an option. The county vets fund will also pay for some housing needs, so shorter term, and sometimes if people need a period of time while they can make a veterans VASH voucher work.
So George, do you think it's a fair statement to say then, because there was a focus put on this, and the community did come together, that as we come together under North Star, putting, shining the light on those things, housing for those who are living in their cars, children who are living at a friend's house, other veterans, people who have mental health issues, people who have addiction issues, that if we put a focus on that, that we could start reducing it and start providing for them services and help so that they can live better lives? Is that a fair statement?
I totally agree with that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else?
Let me just ask one more, if that's all right. So for the individuals that are receiving support, are they receiving help as well for maybe counseling or things to help them get out of their situation so that way they're able to move up and get that hand going in the right direction? I think there's been a lot of communities that have just provided housing, I'm thinking, you know, Portland or Seattle or Atlanta, bigger areas that have bigger challenges so they get entire apartments or things like that, and it seems to be growing. So are they receiving the counseling they need as well?
Yeah, I think that's one of the reasons within North Star that we have called out the focus, because we know that it's, people need a lot of different supports. And like I said, with the permanent supportive housing complex that's being developed, 24 onsite services, resident support counselors, so definitely that support, not just putting people in housing and forgetting about them.
Thank you. I really appreciate what you guys are doing. It goes to my heart.
I'll take one more question, then, wait, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, he kind of touched on it, but the mental health portion of it was something I was concerned about because I know that there's a fair number of people who end up homeless because they aren't receiving the mental health care they need. So I would definitely like to see that being structured in this as we move on. I would love to see some of the city funds go towards that at some point because I think that would help out a lot with keeping the numbers down of the people who end up on the street in the first place.
Well, I greatly appreciate the fact that you came, George, Sarah, and Commissioner Janiky, giving us the opportunity to have more information, to have good conversation around what it is that we have, the possibilities that we have with what we can do with our 1590 funding. So thank you very much for coming this evening and presenting.
Thank you.
Moving on, we'll go to city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and Council. Just two quick items this evening. First one is just an update on the Cedar Woolley Academy. We extended the deadline, and we now have 10 people in the first cohort, which starts meeting tomorrow night through the end of March. And then the second item is we have received agreement for the next round of opioid settlements. So you'll recall, we had an MOU that the council approved recently on the first round, and we've already received our first payment on that, and that payment was around $10,000, roughly what was expected. And we'll see an amount less than that going forward for 17 years. This next agreement, our settlement is similar, and we'll be bringing it to you one of the next council meetings, so just wanted to give you a heads up on that, and that's all I have this evening.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to council reports, Councilman Owen.
All right. Councilwoman Diamond?
Nothing tonight, but I will be recusing myself from the proposed annexation, new business number one.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Burt?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Allen?
Nothing tonight, Madam.
Councilman Lavaca?
Just that we had that meeting on the strategic planning. It went very good. It was the first meeting of the year, so I'm excited about this year, and yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you. And the only thing that I have is that this Saturday is the open house. It's appreciation. Helping Hands Food Bank wants to show their appreciation for all the support that this community has given them. It's between one and, I believe, one and three or one and four. So out at Helping Hands. So out at Helping Hands. And that's all I have. So we will move on then to public comment. I am going to open up the floor at 6:49. If you want to give, oh, forgive me. Councilman McGoffin, did you have, did you have anything?
Not tonight. Thank you, Madam.
All right. My apologies. Then moving on to public comment, it is 6:49. I'm going to open up the floor. If you want to make public comment, please state your name and address and keep it to three minutes. Is there anybody within the chamber right now who would like to give public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will open it up then to those who are online. Is there anybody on the line who would like to give public comment? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close public comment at 6:50, and we're going to move on to unfinished business. The first is the amending chapter 1.20, the general penalty to identify a range of penalties for codes violations and add civil penalties scheme consistent with the RCW 7.80 ordinance 2034.1. And this is dash 23, and this is a second read. So I believe, Nikki, are you taking this one?
Yes, I will. So, you know, I heard your feedback last council meeting, and I did go back and make edits to the staff report, so hopefully you've had an opportunity to look at, at those. I also made edits to the ordinance itself to try and clarify really what the intent was. This particular ordinance came out of a conversation that we had in the senior management team meeting. We were talking about the ordinance that recently passed that created a penalty scheme within the littering ordinance. There's penalties that are both class one, class two, and then there's also criminal penalties in that particular code. So we knew that we needed to put those, that, those classes of infractions somewhere. And what we eventually decided was that those would go in the code and sort of form the building blocks for the rest of the code. And the intent is eventually to standardize our penalties. So when council enacts an ordinance, it can say, I think this should be a class one, or I think this should be a class two, instead of having random penalties throughout the code. I put in some examples in the staff report that talks about the different ranges of penalties, and they're, they're kind of all over the place. So the idea behind this ordinance was to create a penalty scheme that we could then standardize throughout the code. The, the other thing that the ordinance does was create the default penalty as a class one infraction as opposed to a crime. I think that perhaps the message got a little bit lost. That is not the primary intent of this ordinance. The primary intent is to put all the ranges of penalties in one place and standardize them so that we can then, as we're going through the code, finding things that need updating, we can update them with a, a consistent approach. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to review the updated staff report and ordinance. I am happy to take questions if you have any, but otherwise, we'd look for a motion to adopt ordinance 2034.1-23. The .1 is because I significantly changed the ordinance, so we didn't want to just amend the ordinance.
All right. This is the second read, as Nikki has said. Are there any questions for her? All right. Hearing none, is there a motion? You have a question?
It was more of a, because I got with Chief Dan on some of those infractions that we discussed, and we haven't had any to speak of, so I thank you for clarifying kind of what you were, what you were alluding to on that last one. I'm not sure, do we, is, do we need to put in new ordinances to modify the code or anything like that if we've never had any infractions to date when it comes to those?
So I think your question to Chief McElwath was about whether or not we have criminally charged people for random violations of the code that don't have specific crimes associated with them, because the default right now is a crime. So the answer to that is no. But this, this is not about whether or not we've charged any crimes, it's about creating a full range of penalties that is in one place for, for council to choose from. But if, if, if there are concerns about changing the default from a misdemeanor to an infraction, then we can certainly leave it as a misdemeanor, but that doesn't change the position that I think staff has, that we'd like to create the structure that we can then utilize moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions? If not, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2034 dot 1 dash 23.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Owen, to adopt ordinance 2034.1-23, and that is amending the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, Chapter 1.20. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Nikki. Moving on to unfinished business, item number two, amending Title VIII to add a new chapter, 8.05 regarding compost procurement. This is ordinance 2035-23. I do not see Leo here, so Nikki, are you going to take this one? This is also a second read, council.
Absolutely. Happy to do that. So we've had extensive conversations about this particular ordinance. This is a requirement under the new state law. Because the city picks up yard waste more than 26 times per year, it is required to adopt an ordinance that talks about essentially how it will use the finished product. It's encouraging the city to utilize compost in its projects and eventually to track that use and, and report it. I know Leo has provided some additional information about the impacts, and at this point, there aren't significant impacts. This is more of a, these are, these are goals that the state is asking us to put in place for reducing the amount of organic materials that go into landfills. This is a second read. I'm happy to answer any specific questions you might have, but the staff is looking for a motion on this tonight.
All right. Thank you, Nikki. Are there any questions for her?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
So I had some pretty good dialogue with Nikki on, on this email, and I did loop in the council on that. And that was mainly just trying to get my head wrapped around when we were finding the actual code that was stating that. So after a lot of links and, and packets, we did get the actual one that was on page eight of the final bill report. And so I was thinking that it was when we discussed with Leo about collecting organic material and not so much the compost material. That was in a few meetings ago when Leo was here. And making sure that we're not doing more than we need to do. So I definitely appreciate your time and your patience with me, going on the back and forth and, and going through the RCW and the bill reports and trying to pick point exactly where we're seeing that, and it did take a lot of time. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more comments or questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion, pass ordinance 2035-23.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Diamond. It's a motion to adopt ordinance 2035-23, amending the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, Title VIII, to add Chapter 8.05 regarding compost procurement. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. Motion carries. Moving on to item number three, the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, 2023 docket. Mr. Coleman?
Good evening, council, mayor. So this is a continuation of what the council and had it, and the planning commission had a discussion about it last week's work session. So what's being asked of the council is if you would like to add, to create the 2023 docket with just the two items on it, the two rezone requests, in which case the planning commission would study them in detail and then make a recommendation to the council for, to consider later in the year. So all we're doing tonight is creating the docket, which is the plan for the planning commission to work on this year. So there is a motion recommended, and we recommend that you make a motion in support. Thanks.
Okay. This is carryover from last week. Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions?
Oh, any comments, okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen. I think you wanted to make a motion.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendments for 2023 docket.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman Lavaca. It is a motion to adopt the 2023 comprehensive plan document, which includes the two proposals, two proposed items listed in the February 8, 2023 proposed comprehensive plan amendment memo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number four, and that is the proposed regulations for homeless encampments at religious organizations. And this is actually more like a third read. So, Mr. Coleman, are you going to do this one?
Sure. I was going to say it was generously a second read. The council has discussed this in earlier forums, earlier or later last year. So this is the second time that the city council has seen the, the specific ordinance as it is written and recommended by the planning commission. Nothing has changed since the last city council meeting, when I presented this to the council for first read.
John, it has changed.
Oh, Nikki has corrected me. Now I recall, I actually wrote it in the memo that the council requested two clarifications, and those clarifications were made in the ordinance.
One had to do with children, the age of children.
Correct.
Yeah, there was the marijuana.
Correct. So the, the, it was, the language was changed regarding cannabis at the encampment. It's been amended to read a prohibition on the possession or use of non-prescribed or illegal drugs and/or alcohol. This prohibition includes recreational use of marijuana has been added. So this is a second read, again, a motion has been suggested for the council to make, and that motion is requested to approve the ordinance.
All right. Council, do you have any questions for John?
Madam Mayor, I just had-
Councilman Lavaca? Yeah?
On the medical marijuana, would there be a way to ensure that the individual would not bring in excessive amounts and then be able to distribute that or disseminate that throughout without notice? Or I'm sure they would have some sort of penalties associated with that if they were found distributing?
So Nikki, I would presume that would fall under the regular state laws regarding medical marijuana use, where I'm not familiar with the specifics, but in my memory from when the medical marijuana rules passed many years ago, it is for personal use and dissemination to others would not be an allowed use under regular law. So that wouldn't really be any different if this was in someone's personal home or on the street, or at, at school, or at a homeless encampment.
Right. If we're looking at it strictly from a prescription for medical marijuana perspective, it would have to comply with the prescription.
All right.
Is that how we're looking at it?
Begin?
Is, that's how we're looking at it, according to the way I read it, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it would have to comply with the prescription.
Do you have any comments or questions? All right. If not, we're looking for a motion. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor? I'll make a motion to pass the proposed regulation for homeless encampments and religious organizations, ordinance 2036 tac 23.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Owen, to pass the proposed regulations for the homeless encampments at, at religious organizations, 2026-23. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, same sign? All right. Motion carries. Thank you, council. All right. We are moving on then to our new business, and tonight we're going to look at the proposed annexation of the Hanson Greeno and Weiss properties and adjacent properties to the south. Action is requested. And John, I believe you're taking this one?
I'm on a roll. Why not?
Yes, you are.
All right. So, thank you, mayor. So the council probably remembers just a little while ago, we had a different request for, for an annexation to begin. So you probably remember the process. The process begins with the property owners making a ask of the city to begin the annexation process. So this is the intent to initiate an annexation. So at this point, according to state law, we bring the request to the city council. The, the applicants, the way it's written, has the opportunity to meet with the city council. So it runs a little, you know, the applicant has a little, has an opportunity to interact with the council a little different than they would in a normal, formal setting. This is their opportunity to answer and present, it's not just a three-minute type of thing, although that doesn't need to go on forever either. But you do have the opportunity to interact and ask questions and whatnot. So that's the process. The, the project application itself is an application that is almost identical to one that was brought to the city council a couple of years ago by the same applicant. So if you recall, Ms. Hanson brought an annexation, initiation to the city previously on her own, and the city said, okay, great, let's go forward with that. We will entertain a petition for annexation. So Ms. Hanson went through the process of talking to neighbors around there, her, at the request of the city, to create a, an annexation area that is, makes sense and make sure that people that are nearby wanted, were aware of it first, and second of all, if they were interested, had the opportunity to also be a part of the formal petition. And so Ms. Hanson went through that process, found other willing annexation petitioners and put a petition together, brought it to the city council, and the city council elected not to accept the petition for annexation. But through that process, because Ms. Hanson found other neighbors that were willing to, to sign a petition, when she elected to come back to the city council with this, this initiation request, she included those other people as part of the initiation request. And the, the hard work of this annexation of, you know, figuring out what the logical boundaries might be has kind of been done already. And so Ms. Hanson has proposed an annexation area that would be the same or virtually the same as what was brought under the actual petition last year. I hope that makes sense. The map kind of, the map kind of helps out. The, this annexation petition, if you recall, has one nuance to it that's a little different than the typical annexation process in Cedar Woolley, is that the Hanson property and the Greeno property don't actually connect to city limits right now. There is several properties in between that are owned by another family. That is the Mumford family. And I reached out to the Mumfords to let them know that this process was going on again and get their feedback. The Mumfords had signed several years ago as part of a petition for them to be able to subdivide their property. They signed a no protest to annexation waiver. And that no protest to annexation waiver says that if an annexation were ever to be proposed in the area, they would be required to sign the annexation petition. So even without the Mumfords' actual signature, the city has the opportunity to sign on behalf of them through this legal agreement for several of the properties that are owned by the Mumfords. Thus, with the Mumfords' property included, the Greeno and Hanson properties are- Thus, with the Mumfords' property included, the Greeno and Hanson properties are, would be contiguous to the city. The annexation area would be contiguous. So it meets the technical aspects of an annexation. This is an annexation initiation request, so what the council is being asked is to respond to one-
Two, three.
Two, three, four motions about how the annexation process would proceed if you're willing to let the annexation process proceed. These are all scripted in state law, and they're fairly basic questions with the exception of the one nuanced question about the Mumford parcels. So this is your opportunity to speak with the applicant. This is also the applicant's opportunity to speak to the City Council. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to questions, maybe have, if the applicant is willing to speak, would like to speak now, this would be their great time, and then start the conversation. And I'm happy to answer further questions about any technical things involved with this annexation, annexation initiation request.
All right. Thank you, John. And yeah, so I would like to give Ms. Hanson the opportunity to come forward if she liked to speak. You're not obligated to do that, but if you would like to make a statement, I'd like to give you that opportunity.
I just hear you ask if you would-
Consider the annexation. Absolutely. All right. Thank you. Okay, so are there any questions for John? Okay, hearing then, we do have a series of motions that need to happen. The first one is a motion to continue the proposed annexation process that is requested by Laura Hanson to exercise the city's authority to sign an annexation petition for all seven Mumford parcels, as authorized by the Agreement Regarding Annexation and the ULID, the LID waiver of protest for development within the UGA of the City of Seidewully, filed under Auditor File Number 200304204148.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve that annexation request. Hopefully, I don't gotta repeat everything you just said.
Yeah, I'm not gonna-
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca and a motion by Councilman McGoffin. Is that right? Okay, yeah, Councilman McGoffin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, moving on to the second motion, and that is a motion that the city require the simultaneous adoption of a proposed zoning regulation. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Right.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Burns and second by Councilman Lavaca. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Moving on to motion number three. It is a motion that the city require the assumption of all or all, any portion of existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Allen, second by Councilman Owen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. And the last is to make a motion to authorize the mayor to have signatory power on any annexation petition for the parcels, subject to the agreement regarding the annexation and the ULID/LID waiver of protest for development within the UGA of the City of Seidewully, again filed under Auditor File Number 200304240148. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. All right, we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, second by Councilman Burns. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Congratulations. All right. Anything else, John?
Just thank you. I know that's a complicated one, and I appreciate you understanding it.
Thank you for sitting through the council meeting just to find that out. Appreciate it.
Get to work, John.
Have a good evening. All right, moving on to second item of new business, and that is the grant approval, Community Project Funding Grant Number B-22-CP-WA-0940, the Olmstead Park Development. Mr. Freiberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. So I'll admit, I've got a little bit of a dilemma on this particular grant, and I'll explain that as we go through. On the surface of it, when we started working on the Olmstead Park Improvements Project in 2019, '20 area, Nathan started writing grant applications. We tried several sources, including the RCO, state-level RCO. We applied for two separate half a million dollar grants from RCO, one of which was federal funds and the other one was state funds. We were awarded a half a million dollars from RCO for, under the federal program. Parallel with that, there was an application that was submitted to, basically through Congressman Larson's office, for community project funding. It's under the Federal Disaster Relief Program. Don't know why, but that's where it resides. That was, that application was also made for the same basic project. It was for what we're calling the Phase One Site Improvements Project at Olmstead Park. And we have been in a long process, which collimates in what you see tonight, to get that project in the form of an actual grant agreement. The sticking point that's come up, since the RCO grant is also federal funds, and I read on my beating heart today, the Code of Federal Register talking about the rules for that, there is a provision in there that you cannot use two federal-funded sources for the same project. And so we have two separate funds that have identical descriptions on what they're going to do, which is the site improvements on the project. And we need both of those sources of funds, and yet we have this provision. Nathan and I had a long discussion with the staffers from RCO yesterday, and their suggestion for us is that we use local sources of funds to fill our gap and not rely on the other federal funds. And by the way, one of the clarifications that we also had to make with them is because of the timeline, since we estimated that project originally to now, in COVID with all the effects, the cost of the project has gone up substantially. And so, and as you know, you've acted to use part of the ARPA funds that the city was granted by the federal government to backfill the cost increases on both Olmstead and Memorial. Point of fact is, is ARPA funds are also federal. And so we cannot, on the face of it, use those funds either. So I've been spending the last several days scratching on my spreadsheets and scratching my head on how to manage this particular dilemma. And it does turn out that we have adequate funds that we can move ahead with the site improvements on Olmstead Park by juggling them around. Basically, the other major pot of money we have for the project is our park impact fees. We have a million and a half, excuse me, $550,000 roughly available for that. And so we can backfill the funds to make that project whole. The dilemma is, what do I do with the additional half a million dollars from HUD, since the description for the project is the same? And so I'm still working on that. We could do this one of two ways. We could table this for the night and bring it back on the 22nd, or you can go ahead and act on it if you choose. I guess the worst outcome that could happen is, is we cannot actually use their money. I don't like that one. I've never had to not, or never not been able to use grant funds. And I'm working on ways to work around that. And I'm waiting for a call back from my grant manager at HUD to discuss this. We have two other phases proposed for Olmstead Park. The second one is the structures, including the caretaker residence and the four shelters, and a couple of other minor structures. And then a third one, that's for the playground equipment. The playground part of the project is actually a pretty vital part of that. And my thought was, is to propose to RCO, that we, excuse me, to HUD, that we use their funds for the, either the Phase Two or the Phase Three improvements, and maybe even a mix of those. Since we have ARPA funds that we can't use on Phase One as well, that would allow us the opportunity of doing a fair amount of the other two phases on this project. And so that's what I'm planning to do. I'm waiting for a call back from them to schedule a meeting and discuss that, and that'll be in the next couple of days, I hope. So that's where we're at tonight. Two parts to the motion that you see, one of which is to confirm the mayor's appointment of me as the city representative or the authorized representative for the project, which I kinda need, because I am talking to them as your representative. And the other one is to ratify the agreement itself for the half a million dollars. I see no particular harm in going ahead with the motion as written, and I think that's probably the way to go. I just wanted to let you know that I'll likely be bringing this back to you to clarify at some point in the future. So with all that long explanation, I would request that you move ahead with the motion as is presented in the memorandum there.
Well, it's good information to have. Thank you. Thank you for presenting that. Are there any questions or comments?
There are, Mark. You know, it's, so many things are up in the air right now. How much difference does it make if we wait until the 22nd and maybe you have some more answers and phone calls in from HUD and stuff?
Yeah, we could certainly do that, as long as you're comfortable as me continuing to act as your representative, so.
Can we just do, I mean, this is up to the council, but can we just make you the representative tonight and then come back and get the details?
Yeah, I'm certainly fine with that.
For the funding, yeah. Does that work with you, Madam?
It works, it works for me. Yeah, yeah. Anyone else? Comments or questions? Okay, did you want to make that motion, Mr. Allen?
I will make a motion to have Mark Freiberger, the representative for any of the grants and stuff being made.
I'll second the motion, Madam.
All right.
For representative for-
Representative, right.
For the Community Project Funding Grant. Okay. All right, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Allen, second by Councilman Lavaca, and it is a motion to confirm Public Works Director Mark A. Freiberger to act as the city's authorized representative for the Community Project Funding Grant project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. And then we will come back regarding the other funding.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mark. All right, last item for tonight is amending, we have several codes here, it looks like, amending Seidewully Municipal Code, Section 12360303, which is the community center facility, Ordinance Number 2038-23. Second is Seidewully Municipal Code, Section 13.30.040, which is the non-residential schedule and other provisions, Ordinance 2037-23. Amendment, amending Seidewully Municipal Code, Section 15.60.090, Fire Department Impact Fee and Establishment of Service Area, Ordinance 2040-23. And amendment, amending Seidewully Municipal Code, Section 18-15-040, which is an appeal procedure, and Ordinance 2039-23, which is updating, all of this is updating the master fee schedule to reflect these ordinance changes and other changes, which is Resolution 111523. All right. Ms. Conken?
I'll start, and hopefully maybe Nikki can fill in and help me where I need it. So all of these are generally administrative items that have impact on the municipal code and fees. So several ordinances, and then at the end is the master fee schedule. Everything kinda tied up in there. So the first one is the Ordinance 2038-23. This amends the municipal code for the community center facilities. The only thing that has been changed in there was a request from some of our facilities to add storage closet fees into the community center to ensure that only eligible, long-term organizations have use of those areas. And the dollar amounts are also updated in that final resolution for the master, or the final, yeah, resolution for the master fee schedule. I don't know if you want me to go through all of them first, or one by one?
Why don't we go through all of them?
Okay. That's the first one. The next one is Ordinance 2037-23, Non-Residential Schedule and Other Provisions. Again, change to the master fee schedule. This is a pretty small change. It's just one item that was not removed from the municipal code into the master fee schedule, and that has now been done so regarding volume of sewer, I think? Is that the right term? Next one is Ordinance 2040-23. This is the Fire Department Impact Fees and Establishment of Service Areas. Again, there's just some minor changes to the municipal code and adding things into the master fee schedule. So the code is just referencing the master fee schedule. Ordinance 2039-23, this is appeal procedures. Again, very minor change, changing some wording, very minor wording in the municipal code, and then updating the dollar amount in the master fee schedule. And then finally, the Resolution 1115-23, and this is updating the master fee schedule with all of those items in those other ordinances. In the packet, Lisa from Nikki's firm has put this, the master fee schedule together for us and tracked changes. So everything in red in that packet was changes we've made to the master fee schedule.
That was very helpful that she did that.
One thing to add, if I could, this also incorporates the previous ordinances that you adopted at the end of the year to change utility rates.
All right. I do have a question for you before I open it up to the council. Would it be all right if we could, if the council is willing to approve, make one motion to approve all the ordinances, and second motion would be to do the resolution? Can we do that?
It's not my preference, but we could do that.
Okay. So you'd like us to take them one by one?
If you specifically call out each ordinance by number, then I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right, good. I just was wondering. So are there any questions for Kelly or Nikki?
Question for Kelly, Madam Mayor, if that's right? On the impact fee schedule, are any of those increases taking place during this session, or these were voted on during previous sessions? Such as like the Riverfront Park after-hours being a $150 flat fee over the hourly increase afterwards, per hour after your time?
Previously, it was $50 an hour, or $25 an hour after that. In practice, that is not what was being done. And in our reservation system, there was some discrepancies between the two. And talking with, talking with Nathan about the facility monitor, that $150 was the easiest for- for everyone involved, and actually slightly lowered the, the fee to our citizens. I don't believe that was addressed in, at previous council meetings.
Okay. Thank you. And then, the impact fees, they went up a little bit, and that's what we discussed at previous meetings as well, from what I understand.
I believe so.
Okay. Councilman Burns?
If there's nothing else, I was going to make a motion. Can I include the resolution, or do I need to just do the ordinances?
Just the ordinances, and it's, and you have to read each of them individually or call them out one at a time. So, we can pass one at a time.
Nikki, stop me if I'm doing this wrong. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2038-23, ordinance 2037-23, ordinance 2040-23, ordinance 2039-23, and resolution 11...
Well, we'll do the resolution second.
Okay. Just the ordinances then.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
So, we have a motion by Councilman Burns, second by Councilwoman Diamond, to approve, and I'm, I'm going to read out what they are, so it goes into the record. Ordinance number 2038-23, which is amending the Sejewooley Municipal Code, Section 12.36.030, community center facility. In addition, ordinance number 2037-23, amending Sejewooley Code, Section 13.30.040, the non-residential schedule and other provisions. Ordinance number 2040-23, amending Sejewooley Municipal Code, Section 15.60.090, Fire Department Impact Fee and Establishment of Service Area. And the last ordinance, number 2039-23, amending Sejewooley Municipal Code, Section 18.15.040, appeal procedure. Is there any questions or discussions?
Just my apologies for not reading that part instead.
No worries. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay. Motion carries. Is there a motion for resolution 1115-23?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to pass resolution 115 tac 23.
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, second by Councilwoman Diamond, to approve resolution 1115-23, updating the master fee schedule to reflect these ordinance changes and other changes explained in the below issue. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. That is the last of our new business for the night. I would encourage you, if you hadn't seen it already, there, we received a letter from Jean Ingolston and Terry Sapp regarding the historic preservation that we, committee that we've put together. Especially want to thank the Planning Commission for taking that on, especially on such short notice, and also to take a look at the building permits and planning permit review status. I do appreciate you putting that together, John. It gives a lot of explanation as to what's happening in the city. It's really good information to have. And then, also the Fire Department, their monthly data, which is always, I always find fascinating. So, if there's nothing else for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, may I make a quick statement for our job corps friends? So, the packets we're reading from that we're getting this information is posted on the city website, if you're not aware of that. So, yeah, there's like a packet that's released on Friday. We read it throughout the week, and then we talk about it on Wednesday. So, you guys might be wondering, like, where do they get all this information from? It's available to all of you guys the same. So, thank you.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.